All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the St. Charles City County Library Board of Trustees Budget Work Session for Fiscal Year 21. It is Wednesday, May 20th, 2020, and I'm going to take attendance of the Board of Trustees. For the record, Stacy Alvarez.
Here.
Myra Crook.
Here.
Joanne Lico. Georgia McNabb.
Here.
Justin Kellier.
Here.
Mary Reese. Gil Zumwalt.
Here.
We do have a quorum.
Should we just dive in?
Dive in. Would you like me to share the screen?
Um, yeah. That's, um, yeah, you can go ahead, I think, and share the screen. Or share the packet. Um, so I'll just give some introductory remarks. Thank you, all of you, for taking the time to be here this evening. What we're going to do is we're going to present a preliminary or an overview of the preliminary budget for fiscal '21, and I'm gonna, I'll just give some general comments and some overview comments, and then we'll have various staff comment on specific portions of the budget. We're not going to go line by line. There are written reports in the budget, and we can certainly answer any questions that you have. So just, just kind of looking at it, an overall big picture point of view, and we talked about this a couple of months ago at your meeting, that there was a lot of unknowns going into fiscal year '21, given the situation with COVID. And so what the, the budget that you have presented here, we have been conservative in our revenue projections. We really, we need to wait until or further down into the year, I think, to have a better idea of what the situation will be with the actual revenues, particularly as it relates to tax revenues. But we do know that we've been advised not to depend, count on any state aid coming in next year and so forth. So what's being presented here, I think, is a, is a realistic estimate that isn't overly optimistic or overly pessimistic. And it's about a 4.3% decrease from last year, yeah, 4.3%. One thing that does pertain to the revenues is we, we were able to budget for the elimination of overdue fines in fiscal '21, and that is something that I think is important, and particularly in this situation, is important to our community. So we were able to incorporate that into, into this budget. One of the areas that we have counted on in the past that will definitely be reduced is our private support from our two sort of affiliated fundraising organizations, the Foundation and the Friends. Both organizations had to cancel their major fundraising events in the coming year, so the Foundation will not be having a gala in, in October as planned, and then the Friends will not be having their book sale. So a result of that is we are not going to be seeing nearly the same support. And I just came from the Foundation Board Meeting a couple hours ago, where they were passing their fiscal year '21 budget, and it was, I mean, they were struggling as well, just like, like we had to, to get to a balanced budget, and they recognize that it's kind of going to be a year of being on hold for them. So on the, the expense side of that, we're, we're really paring down our expenditures. Most of the areas that you'll see are flat and/or reduced in terms of expenditures. And we are, some examples, you know, you look at collections, and you look at programming, and we'll talk about those in a little bit more detail later, but those are both relatively flat, but areas where we could reduce significantly, like travel and training, we have done so. We, you know, there's, there's still a considerable amount in there for mileage and things throughout the district, but any sort of out of town or overnight travel for conferences or anything like that has, has basically been eliminated from the coming budget. And we will, will look for ways that we can provide training opportunities to staff onsite at a lower cost. We are proceeding with the long-needed website redesign that is in, in this coming year, and that is underway. And then IT expenditures as well are really kind of focused on those necessary things to continue ongoing operations. And just as you're going through the sheet, since it's on the screen, I know it's a little bit sometimes hard to decipher that on, when you look at the top, on the revenue sides, when you see a negative number, that means a decrease. So when you see 1.3% negative on tax revenue, for example, that means fiscal year '21 is showing 1.3% decrease from last year. On the expense side, when you see a negative number, that's actually an increase. So when you look at supplies, that negative 4.5% shows that fiscal '21 is actually a 4.5% increase over fiscal '20. A very significant piece of the expenditure side is the fact that we have not budgeted any pay increases or any step increases for staff this year. Ordinarily, or those would have been a 3%, so you can see what our salary budget there is over $10 million, and kind of calculate in your head quickly what 3% of that would have been. And it is, it is significant, and it's something that hasn't happened in this district in recent memory. So that is a significant, that's a significant piece of this. And then also a hiring freeze as well, and that doesn't mean necessarily that specific positions won't get filled. It means that we're going to be doing a lot more juggling this year, I think, of staff internally in order to fill the positions of greatest need. So in your packet, there is a sheet that has the FTEs in the various departments and at the various branches, and I think throughout the year, to just manage the situation, there's going to be movement within that and throughout the organization of, of staff. This is hard. I mean, I can, I can't sugarcoat that at all. It, this is, it, it, it's putting, the library is in a difficult position to make some of these staffing decisions. So you see there is a decrease here of, in the FTE. And another thing is, as we get more clarity on what the actual revenues will be, it's quite possible we, coming back to you for budget amendments, to possibly add some of these positions back in. It's just where we are right now, at this particular time, we can't make a commitment one way or the other to know whether the funding will be in place. But it, it, you know, I'll reiterate, it is, it is a hard situation. And then-
This is Robyn. I just want everybody to know that Joanne was able to join at 7:12.
Okay. Hi, Joanne. So even, so these precautions in place, I think, on the expenditure side, you know, this is, we are looking at a really, really tight budget this year. As a reminder for everyone that doesn't know, we are, Missouri statute requires us to present a balanced budget. So, um, and that's balanced operating budget. Capital projects are separate from that and are taken out of the capital reserves. So we, we did, I mean, we had to really sharpen our pencils here to get the expenditures down to a level that is a balanced budget. And when you see on the summary sheet, we're looking at 19.6 million in revenues and 19.6 million in expenditures, there's really, there's a difference of under $30,000. And that's significant because it means we're not putting really anything into our reserves this year, and our reserves are what funds future capital projects and future maintenance. So we can do that for a year, but that's not, that's not a situation that can go on multiple years in a row, or we will be facing possible situations where we would be running short of capital funding that we need. So, um, so that, that's a significant piece to notice. And then we have continued, as I mentioned, to budget for some of that routine maintenance and capital projects that were already in progress. So we're assuming CliffView is going to move forward. We are moving forward with the Bookmobile. I will say, just coming from the Foundation Board Meeting, they had some surplus funds left over this year that they have committed to the library for the Bookmobile, so it's another $16,000 to what they've already raised. So we're getting close to, and it's, you know, close to $70,000 now from the Foundation toward the Bookmobile, so, so that's helpful. And then some projects that will help us work more efficiently under these conditions, and that specifically kind of relates to reconfiguring desks, for example, in some of our branches to, to support more efficient staffing operations. What is not included are anything related to the recent flooding at Catherine Lineman. We still don't know that extent of that damage, so that will have to come to you at another time, but just know that that is a capital project that has to happen that is not incorporated here. So that is really the main piece, is kind of the big, big picture that I wanted to talk about, and we're going to move forward, as I said, we're going to have some specific pieces to talk about. So I will turn it, unless anyone has any questions for me right now, I will turn it over to Julie, who will start out kind of giving you more detail about the revenues.
So like Jason said, that we've taken, excuse me, a conservative approach to budgeting the revenues. So we, we're seeing an overall decrease from what was budgeted prior year of about 4.3%. I think it's evident as far as the categories that are seeing reduction. So like was, like I had mentioned prior, we do not set the tax rates until September. We really don't know what's going to be happening revenues currently. So that will be set, it's like, well, you know, pretty much mon, of course, monitor it continually. The other point being, I'm sorry, I lost my train of thought. What was I going to say? Anyway, sorry about that. So we will be watching that, monitoring it, and then, you know, there are some, I think, things underway as far as providing additional support to state and local government. There are certain, you know, support funds that were made available that we weren't eligible for, so not knowing what that landscape looks like, we, it is certainly something that we're going to monitor on the legislative side, as well as what that tax rate will be and the collections surrounding it. This is the biggest, you know, portion, it's like, of our funding, the real and personal property taxes. So it's pretty much, I guess, what I have to say about revenue, I really think that Jason covered the bulk of that. If you have any questions about it, we'd be happy to entertain them. And the other portion that I was going to talk about is the salaries and benefits, particularly the healthcare line. We are seeing, as far as the salaries, it's like you're seeing a decrease in the FTEs, but we're seeing the full impact of our full-time staff. And, excuse me, that includes the healthcare coverage eligibility, and with COVID, we're not sure what that means as far as expense. It's assumed that it's going to increase, but we're certainly not sure what that looks like. Luckily, excuse me, we are a self-funded plan, so unlike some of the commercial insurers, you know, a couple of years back, we had, you know, incredible increases that were on the horizon. That's why we switched to a level funded, which is a self-funded plan, and we've been really lucky in the ability to manage our healthcare costs. So that's another area that's of particular interest that we're really going to have to monitor. Lot of the elective items, obviously, people have not gone to the dentist. I've seen that, and, you know, it's like in our activity, it's like, and they, they certainly couldn't have elective healthcare procedures, so we have not seen those expenses. So I'm really interested in seeing what that looks like in conjunction with the fact that we go up for, again, we have a July through June fiscal year, we renew our healthcare, you know, in November for January 1st. So it's split, just as in the revenue category, we don't receive our revenues until seven months into the fiscal year, so it's one of those projection situations that really make it difficult for us. And I think-
And just to let everyone know that Nevada Smith did join at 7:19.
And just one other item, you see that the other expense has increased. That does include increased unemployment benefits with regard to our furloughed float staff.
All right. Are there any questions so far? We can certainly entertain things at the end as well, but don't hesitate if you have questions about any of the pieces so far, we can answer them. Okay. So then the next piece we wanted to specifically talk about is the materials section there, and Carol Schreie is going to address that briefly.
Thank you. So as stated earlier, we're looking at a nearly flat materials budget for fiscal year '21, and really, we're approaching the materials budget with the thought in mind that flexibility is key, because we just do not know yet how customers are going to react to using our physical-based items again, whether they will want to stay away from them, or whether they will flock to them again. And we also aren't really sure what's going to happen with the huge spike we saw in our eresources and our e-media. So we don't know if we kind of broke through a barrier for many people, and now that they know the library has those items, how great they are, how easy they are to use, they're going to continue to use those. So again, flexibility is key, just making sure that we can move to supporting both the needs of our customers on the physical item side and the digital item side. One thing we do know is that it is predicted that the cost of physical books is going to rise substantially due to interruptions in the supply chain and just the state of the publishing industry right now. So although the budget is flat, that probably still means we're not going to be able to get as much bang for our buck this year as far as physical items. So again, it was just a lot of rearranging, but overall, flat.
Can I ask you one question about this, Joanne? I'm sorry.
Sure.
So going into this, you know, obviously, we had, what, just about a year prior to all of this, the change in the publishing industry about electronic materials? Have they backed off of that at all in view of the recent circumstances?
So the publisher that had done the most restrictive license did change that. So the, oh my gosh, Macmillan backed away from the embargo on items, but we still see that much higher cost in purchasing ebooks, and we still see the metered items where they essentially only are good for one year or two year, and then if we want to keep them in the collection, we have to repurchase them again. So that is still happening on the ebook side and the e-audio side now as well. One thing we did decrease was areas that we are already seeing less interest in, which is our print periodicals and our physical audio media, so that includes music CDs and spoken audiobooks on CD. And those have been declining for quite some time, and I think that the potential is even greater for this year with people, again, maybe using the digital magazines for the first time, using the downloadable audiobooks for the first time, that we might continue to see decreases there. We also just can't buy things anymore, like some artists don't release items on physical CDs, some publishers don't do audiobooks on physical CDs anymore. So we were able to take some of that money through the rearranging and say, okay, that can go to digital audiobooks, that can go to digital ebooks.
Any additional- Okay. So then we also wanted to touch on adult and youth programming classes and events, and Maggie Melson is going to do that.
Yes. So we pretty much kept our budget flat, though we aren't offering classes and events in person. Our staff, the branch staff have done an amazing job of, of being really nimble, embracing the online virtual class format. Right now, actually, we have the Bread Monk doing a Facebook Live with us, connected to the St. Charles County Reads thing that we are doing. So it's been really great, and actually, our customers have really embraced this as well. Last time I checked, we had over 500 people watching Father Dominic right now, and so we're really actually reaching a lot of people that maybe we wouldn't have been reaching, that we didn't reach before, or that we weren't reaching. So we're really excited, as, as hard as this has been, we're really excited about the opportunities that this has created as well. And so we, you know, it really broadens a lot of performers and a lot of authors, and a lot of things are, they're offering virtual things, so we wanted to still maintain a budget where we could continue doing that stuff virtually, and once we go live, you know, back into the real world of, of doing classes, we can still maintain virtual classes and events as well, just to kind of continue reaching people more broadly than the people that just come into the library.
Okay. So then the, the last piece, kind of before we open it up more, is Lori is going to kind of do an overview of the capital projects that are incorporated into the capital project list this year.
Sure. I'll just repeat what Jason said earlier, that the list of capital projects really includes special projects, like the Bookmobile, the mobile library vehicle, and some cargo van replacements that we need to accomplish this year because they're getting old and have very high mileage and maintenance issues. And also, we're addressing the maintenance as it was scheduled during our 2016 facility condition assessment, that gave us guidance into ongoing repairs that we need to make in our different facilities. And of course, we're also moving to redesign some of our service points. That redesign has become even more, I think, essential during this pandemic environment so that we can protect the health and safety of our staff and those community members they're interacting with. So it, we had intended to make some of these physical changes in four of our branches this year in order to combine the service desks into a one-stop shop, basically, which would be more convenient for our customers and help us to maybe right-size the number of staff who are giving that kind of direct, one-to-one service face-to-face, and be able to redeploy staff into other responsibilities that we know are growing in demand, like outreach services, for example. So what you have here is a list. I mentioned the first two already, but we also, of course, brought to you last month, was it last month or just last week, maybe, the Dance Connection renovation project at the admin building? That is the space that we recovered last July for use of the district, and I think the demolition begins tomorrow in that space, and once that's complete, we'll have a better idea of what the rebuild will actually cost. And you can see there's a placeholder there for that, based on the estimate that we've received. We also know that we need to reconfigure our collection services processing area. Again, there is a, an efficiency that we've been working towards in the last few years with how we handle our materials. We used to get them in boxes, put them on a cart, take the cart to shelves, put them on the shelves, then put them back on the cart and move back and forth with these materials, and then they go back on a cart and back to the warehouse. So we're trying to be much more efficient by converting to a cart-based setup, and to do that, we had to dismantle some of the shelves, but also make a door between the warehouse and the collection services area. And then you see some parking lot repairs, HVAC, heating and cooling. A lot of these kinds of things are, were on the facility condition assessment recommendation and calendar. The administrative office at Winghaven is on the list because we have a manager there who does not have any space that is private to have conversations with staff. And as we all know, sometimes you have to have an appraisal, an annual appraisal, or coaching kind of a meeting, and there's no place currently in that building. They either have to meet outside, which isn't possible all year long here, or go somewhere else to have that meeting. So we're looking at building a very small, actually converting space probably that exists in the building already to an administrative office. We are still working on that teen area at Catherine Lineman, and as you know, that building suffered a bit from the recent flash flooding, but the construction firm that is working on the teen area has continued to work. So they are, are making progress and pretty much on target. We're happy to know that at this point. And, and then also at Catherine Lineman, we're talking about enclosing the lobby area, and this is to think forward about providing locker pickups of holds, allowing people to have access to holds pickups outside of regular library service hours. So that's another project that we're moving forward. At Corporate Parkway, which is among our busiest branches, and now that we don't have a building in, went, the large building in Wentzville on our immediate future planning, we realize that Corporate Parkway needs a bit of attention. And so we're going to replace the flooring in the public area, which is really in rough shape and quite old, and we're going to reconfigure that service desk as well. McClay was supposed to be painted this spring, but because of the pandec, we had to put that off, and so that is on the list here. We need to reconfigure the service desk at Kisker Road and also at Deer Run. And then we're also talking about replacing children's area flooring at the Endorf-Cordell branch. That's particularly important because we know that so many of those young users spend time on the floor in our buildings, and we want to make sure that that material is well-maintained and not deteriorating, and that, that space needs help. And then, of course, CliffView is on this, this list as well. I'm happy to answer any questions if you have them.
And actually, that, that's kind of what we had prepared to go over. So happy to answer any questions about the budget that's being presented here.
Jason, I apologize because I logged on late. Could, could you maybe go over what you think the, the model for revenue for next year will look like in terms of, are we thinking there will be a larger percentage of unpaid taxes, or what are we looking at in terms of what your revenue projection is there? I could, I kept trying to turn Robyn's screen, but that wouldn't happen, sorry.
Yeah. Julie, do you want to address that? Yeah, Julie, do you want to address that?
So as far as model, it's really just a rough estimate. I mean, it's, you know, projection, because we have no idea. You haven't set the tax rate yet. We don't know what that is. We don't know if the collections will be slowed. We're assuming now that possibly they will be. We will not know that, obviously, until we get closer to, you know, 2021. And we're already going to be seven months at that time into the fiscal year. So it's one of those, I believe, since, you know, the budget has to be adopted, we're just basically, you know, projecting what we think could possibly happen right now. We just, we don't know. It's one of those things that we monitor from, you know, week to week.
Yeah, so I mean, overall, when you look at the revenues, I mean, that is, you know, we're projecting a 1.3% decrease in the tax revenue portion. It's the sort of the non-tax portions that we know a little bit more, which is, you know, we know we're not going to be receiving state aid. We've been, we've been told that already by the state. We know that the major fundraising events for both the foundation and the friends have been canceled for this year. So they will both be, their contributions will be substantially reduced. So it's really those other pieces that we know will decrease. We did, and I don't know when you logged on, but we are continuing to move forward with eliminating overdue fines here. So that's why you see, or one of the reasons why you see the drop in charges for services. But other pieces of that are things like passport revenue, we expect to be lower. We will probably, we won't, you know, we won't be doing that at the beginning of the fiscal year at all, probably. And then, you know, we don't know, you know, what impact the situation will have moving forward. So overall, we're looking here at a 4.3% decrease, which we think is not overly optimistic or overly pessimistic.
Okay, thank you.
And the investment earning line, that is also an unknown. You know, we place excess cash, it's like into our CD investments. If we do have to consume some of that cash, obviously, the investment income is going to come down as well. So we just do not know about that either.
Thank you.
So I think we don't usually like to say we don't know this much in a budget meeting. But I mean, that's simply, I think, where a lot of organizations are. Joanne, I said earlier too, that the foundation just had their board meeting a few hours ago where they passed their fiscal year 21 budget. And it was, it was much the same. It was, you know, they don't know what the situation with fundraising will be moving forward. So, you know, they're, they have in their budget $50,000 for the library. What we see here in our revenue is $50,000 that we know that we are receiving from the foundation for the Bookmobile. But they don't know what they will be able to give us this year. So it is, it's a time to kind of just hold steady and see how things shake out.
Okay, so next steps?
The, I think we are, you know, if this is, I mean, if there's nothing that jumps out at you here, I mean, we will continue probably to double-check all of these numbers and make sure that, as Julie said, things change every week. So there may be alterations, but this would be what we would present to you more or less as we move forward into the, or at the June board meeting. And also, I did mention earlier too, that specifically, we're, because we have a hiring freeze here, that is a difficult situation. And we'll probably see, and you'll probably see throughout the year, more movement among staff between locations and between departments. So we can make sure we are moving staff where they're most needed. And then also, as things develop, probably more budget amendments. We'll be coming to you more often to amend this budget, to hopefully get some of those positions back into the budget or to make adjustments as we know more.
I have a question about that. So when you're saying that, are you saying that maybe in three, four months or something, or six months after the taxes are, I guess? So if our collections are in January, or we get our distribution payment in January, we see where collections are, and you see that people have paid on time, and it looks like we're in a better place, that you may come back and ask for an adjusted budget to add in more for salaries and positions?
Conceivably, or adjust other areas as well. We would adjust the revenue projections at that point then, too.
Okay.
Okay, I have, I just wanted to go over the capital and special project list that we have here, understanding how important it is. Have you determined a, like, a, have you prioritized any of this? Because it's a lot of money. And being as tight as we are going to be facing things, it's kind of important to know what we're going to be able to live without.
Yeah, um, you know, this was, I think, definitely pared down from kind of what we had initially planned for this year. So when you look at Cliff View, obviously, that is a priority, being that we have the building. And I think the Bookmobile is a priority as well, because that essentially is taking the place of looking at, at least in the near term, a larger facility in Wentzville. It's part of our strategy that's already kind of started for the northeast portion of the county. So I think that is a priority as well. And as I mentioned, we are, you know, we're getting a substantial amount of funding for that from the foundation. And then the admin building, again, that is underway as well. We have staff positions, or we have staff that really don't have office space right now. And anywhere to work, they have been working in, I think, just makeshift offices to this point. And particularly, moving forward back with moving, moving forward as we go back with social distancing and things. I mean, we can't, that's not, not something that we can continue moving forward. So, and then honestly, the rest of this stuff is maintenance. I mean, we could look at, one of the things, I think, we will not, other than those few things that I mentioned that are already in progress, we will not necessarily do things at the very beginning of the fiscal year. We'll maybe hold off until, till calendar 2021. So again, we have a better idea of how things, you know, are shaking out. I mean, at this point, it's anyone's guess. We could, I mean, the economy could, everything could reclose and stay closed. We just don't know. And in that case, we'd be facing a completely different situation. So I think that, that's the main piece of the strategy is to, on some of those things that aren't already in progress, is to sort of hold off till the second part of the fiscal year.
Okay, that makes sense. I just wanted to check, I could see that it's paired down. And of course, with the Catherine Lindeman now flooding and another expense added in, and we don't even know how great that's going to be, I would assume, at this point. Who knows what else is coming down the road? And it's a concern.
It is.
Jason?
Yeah?
You've had a group working on modifications, I guess we call them, currently, real-time as a result of the virus. Have those impacted the current budget in any significant way? Any of those changes or adjustments?
I'm sorry, and the virus, you said?
Yeah, there are a number of things having to do to accommodate the guideline.
So we are making purchases now of, you know, plexiglass enclosures, for example. We are buying masks and gloves. And so yes, there is a substantial probably set of funds for buying supplies for that, yes.
Yes, it's coming out of the furnishing budget as well as the supply budget. So really, as far as supplies, you know, we're not providing the same level of programming in branch and what have you. So we're seeing a movement of that supply cost to, you know, janitorial supplies as well as, you know, PPE and things of that nature.
Okay, so it's, you can accommodate it by adjusting?
Yes.
So with that being said, that forecast, when you see this document again in June for adoption, the forecast will look considerably different. We do have some projects that have been accelerated, needed projects, as well as those types of furnishings and what have you that the purchasing manager had to do for COVID-related items.
Thank you.
Do we have other questions? Doesn't appear there's any other questions.
Okay. So as I said, we will, you know, we will continue to work on this and adapt as needed as new information comes available. And as Julie said, adjust the forecasts for the, what we present for adoption in, in June. There'll be another chance, if you have, you know, you could send questions that we could address at that meeting as well, if you think of any between now and then.
Understand, it's necessarily fluid, so we appreciate that.
I can see that it's been pared down. I think a lot of work has been put into it. And I can appreciate that, the hard work that's gone into it. It's always hard to cut back and, and cut out. So been down that road myself, so I can understand how hard it is for each department group to look at that as well. So, thank you.
Good job.
Thank you. It can be a little soul-crushing.
Yeah. Good work, team.
Anything else, Jason?
Nothing else for me.
Anything from any board member?
Well done.
I'm good.
Yep, thank you. So I guess we just need a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion to adjourn at this time.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second to adjourn. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Close, okay, we are adjourned.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, stay well.
You too.
Good night, everybody.
Night.